I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 24, 2010 meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first thing I would like to do is, first is a shout out to Joe Paramba, also referred to as Tiny. Just like to say hello to you. I know that you're a frequent viewer of the Board of Selectmen's meetings and a critical analyzer of our meetings. He's been, he's shared that with some of us. So Joe, I hope you're watching this evening. Our first order of business will be the acceptance and/or correction of the meeting minutes of May 17. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept with correction.
We have a motion to accept with corrections. Do I have a second? Selectmen Fornier, second.
On page three, the bottom paragraph needs to be redone and I don't have an exact way of doing it. But it has some information that's left out and if you read it the way it is, it's not clear at all. The basic reason why we made a change was because when we extrapolated the payback, it was Selectman Pierce who said that it was a one-year payback. That's not in here. And then the rest of that analysis was that out of that one year and that one year that you were paying back, half that first year was covered by warranty. So you basically only had the last six months of the year that you didn't have the warranty. That's not in there. And then also in the beginning where it talks about 1.8 years would have payout and then it goes to that rate of return at $60,000 would be three years. I, you can't follow that. There's the connections between those.
I don't know if you've ever come across this before. I'm sorry.
Well, in lieu of the short time we have this evening, perhaps we should
Defer it.
Table this.
That's what my suggestion was gonna be.
Okay. If that's okay, well, I'll just, if you want to just remove your motion and second and we'll defer it till next week.
Oh, okay.
Or later. Listen, if you want to try to
No, 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 no.
We'll do it for next week. It's not gonna
Do it next, yes.
I'm not present next week?
We'll get it to Sue. Okay. Announcements, are there any announcements? I have a couple. I'd like to remind everyone that on this next Monday will be Memorial Day and we have our annual Memorial Day Parade, which I believe kicks off at 9:15 from Barnard Park and makes its way to West Lawn Cemetery. And it will stop a couple of times along the way. It'll stop at the Main Street Bridge, where a wreath will be placed into the Biscataquag River. They'll also stop in front of Town Hall. Then it'll again briefly stop at the statue and then on to West Lawn Cemetery. I know there are many groups that are marching in the parade. If there are any groups that would like to march in the parade, if you have not contacted Kent Nolan, please contact Kent Nolan. He is the American Legion Commander. And if you need his number, please call Town Hall. I don't know it off the top of my head, but we'll get in touch. But it's a nice way to show respect to those who have served our country. David, you had something that you wanted to?
I have one announcement. A person could not attend the public hearing at the high school later this evening and wrote in her concerns.
You mean the public? It was informational meeting.
The public informational meeting at the high school, excuse me. And this is Diana Sterling, lives on Parker Station Road. "As we are unable to attend the public hearing, we would like to let you know we are definitely in favor of constructing a traffic circle at the intersection of Wallace and Mass, although there is much protest at this solution as opposed to traffic lights. It is indeed the best one to keep traffic moving. The traffic circle in Grassmere functions exactly as planned. I have traveled through England and Europe and traffic circles, also known as roundabouts, are common, both on city streets and highways. A study was done three years ago and found there was a definite reduction in traffic accidents. I have sent this information to the Director of Public Works prior to the construction of the Grassmere Circle. From a personal point of view, as a longtime member of the Goffstown Rescue Squad, I have responded to more accidents at this intersection than I can remember. And with traffic lights, you still have accidents. You will hear many loud protests at the public hearing, but there are equally as many people who think the traffic circle makes sense. So please go forward with this plan."
All right. And while we're on that subject, there will be a public informational meeting at Goffstown High School. For those of you who are watching right now, that'll take place at 7:30 tonight at the Hebrew Auditorium at Goffstown High School. It is a public information meeting for the roundabout on Wallace and Mass Road. And there, we'll explain it at the, at the meeting later on, but there was some miscommunication with the, with the press, the media. This is not a public hearing. This is a project that is going forward. We're providing information to the public with regard to the cost, the design, traffic implications, timeframes, et cetera. Certainly, we will take public input as we would always do at any type of meeting of this sort. But it is a, this is already planned. It is already in the works. And later on, Selectman Pierce, who will kind of facilitate that meeting, will again explain that as well. As many of you know, I have a couple of more press releases with regard to traffic in Goffstown. And for those of you who have been driving around the streets, you will know that there is quite a bit of roadwork that's being done. I'm gonna just read off a couple of those to you. The Goffstown Public Works Department announces the start of drainage construction on East Union Street related to the South Mass Drainage Project. Construction will start on Monday, May 24th and is expected to last until June 7th. There will be delays on East Union during the day from 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The road will be fully open each night. Local traffic will be allowed access within the project area on East Union. And vehicles needing access to East Union Street should enter from the main street side. The next one is Center Street and Elm Street. I just wanted to let everyone know that a portion of Center Street and Elm Street will be paved on Friday, May 21st, which is in the past, and they will continue through May 25th and 26th when we believe the top coat will be placed on both Elm Street and Center Street. Will be open for local and through traffic, but due to the high volume of vehicles, you should expect some delays between 7:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. And it's recommended that vehicles find an alternate route Friday, May 21st through Monday, May 24th and Wednesday, May 26th, so the roadwork can be completed as soon as possible. For those of you who would like, you can go to the town's website at www.goffstown.com and get more information. You can also call our Public Works Department at 497-3617. And the other, and I know I make a public push for this a lot, and that is Nixle. I know I signed up for that and it's a great service. Whenever there, a road is closed due to perhaps an accident or this type of construction, Nix, www.nixle.com, you will get a text message or an email letting you know if there's any issues that are going on in the town, whether it be public safety, traffic, et cetera. So I would encourage citizens to sign up for it. It's a free service. And the Police Department, Emergency Management, they do a phenomenal job keeping citizens informed through that means. So please encourage us. Once again, www.nixle.com. And our last announcement, and I guess I stole Rebecca Karen's thunder by saying shout out, but she writes, "I want to give a shout out to Mike Hillhouse and Jason. Thank you for your service. Sincerely, Rebecca Karen." And she is a homeowner on Elm Street. And it was a debris issue that both Mike Hillhouse and Jason Georgantis from our DPW dealt with. So I want to thank them for their good work and thank Rebecca Karen for her kind words. Next is public comment. Is there any, there is really no public here at this point. So we will proceed. Item number four on our agenda is acceptance of donations. We have two donations. One is a donation to the Grassmere Town Hall Restoration Fund, $50 from the Ryan Wood Condominium Association. And the second is a $100 donation from Alan Sue DeRusso to the Heritage Fund. And I would need a motion from the board to accept.
Both donations.
Do I have a second to accept both donations? Selectmen Fornier, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Sue, thank you for your generous donation. Next is our town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Your weekly schedule is in your pocket. There's no changes that I'm aware of at this time. Consensus folder tonight includes the AP warrant, the first half property tax warrant, the lot line adjustment application for the Barnard land, the one employee status report. It's a step increase. Event permit for neighborhood block party, August 10th from 6 to 8 in Roy Park, and this is put on by WZID. And a new entry today was a perambulation report for where that Selectman Pierce compiled for us. And what an excellent job it was.
Motion to accept the consensus poll.
Do I have a second?
With the board's permission, if you could withdraw, remove the employee status report from the consensus.
If we could remove the one employee status report from the consensus folder, so Selectman Campasano may vote. So that's okay with the motioner? Do I have a second then? I'll second it. Again, all those in favor of accepting the consensus folder with the exception of the employee status form, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll take a separate motion to approve the employee status form separately.
So I'm gonna recuse myself.
Seconded by Selectman Pierce. Selectman Campasano is recusing himself. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is 4-0. And I also would like to say thank you to Selectman Pierce for an excellent job. I know that's your forte, but it's a lot of work. And we really appreciate it. And for those of you who don't know, every seven years, the town has to, I guess, verify its town boundaries with the neighboring community, which means physically walking the town boundary, reviewing the markers, and then attesting that this is accurate. And it's quite, there are many, many miles in which have to be walked. And unfortunately, we have a selectman in excellent shape who can do this. So we just want to thank you.
One town down, three to go.
All right. So thank you again for a, for a great job.
The assessor has some recommendations to the board tonight. Reports of a Timbuktu map two, lot 1A. Map 11, lot 261. Map 12, lot 63. Map 18, lot 62. And a current use, land use change tax lien releases on map three, lot 51. Map eight, lot 411.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendations.
Do I second?
I second.
Selectman Pierce seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0.
Thank you. There's also a reappointment of Gene Mayberry to ADA.
So move.
I'll second it. All those in favor of the reappointment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0.
Also, that was added in today to your signature folder is the state needs confirmation that the board is appointing Town Clerk Kathy Ball as a municipal agent.
We have a motion to that effect by Mr. Selectman Pierce. Seconded by Selectman D'Vanzza, which will, I guess, affirm that Kathy Ball is our town clerk.
Municipal agent.
Municipal agent, same thing, right? Yeah. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0. Are all the dogs registered, by the way, in town? Because I'm just curious.
There were long lines and a lot of them were dogs in the end of April.
That's all I've been seeing on the signs, you know.
More than usual.
Imagine if we had new cats?
Yeah.
Thank God that legislation never passed.
Thank God it never passed.
It helped to have the police department have a more stern notice on the board.
Sorry, Sue.
That's fine. The all boards meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 14th at 7:00 p.m. in the Media Center at Goffstown High School. Emails have been sent today to the chairman and vice chairman of each committee. And I also sent them to the full board. And we asked them to send ideas, topics for discussion a week before. Also, you have a final draft in your packets of the property tax information to put up on the town's website. Any changes before we put those up? Because the tax bills will be mailed by the end of this month.
It's, this is the letter that's with the tax bill.
That's the insert, yep.
And then the following pages are the website information?
Yes. We're gonna put the letter up too, just
As a briefie.
Yes.
We're good.
We're good? Okay. All right. Website update. Next week, we are scheduled to meet on Tuesday night because of the holiday. And our IT director will be scheduled to present an update on the new website.
Is it, is it done?
Still in the works, but it will be done by then. Or at least ready for your approval before it goes up.
We're good.
That's it.
All right, we're gonna, no, we're gonna take a break. We're gonna keep going. We're gonna, we do have a couple of, we have a public hearing scheduled for 6:30 and it's, right now it's 6:15. So we're gonna continue on. Why don't we do this? We have Chief O'Brien who's here. So we're going to skip to item number nine, which is an AFG grant application for an exhaust removal system, as well as a second item with regard to Chief O'Brien, is an RFP for a voter repeater communication system. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. Glad you could take me early.
My pleasure.
Glad you were here early.
The first one was the AFG grant, the 2010 AFG grant. I'd like to approve it by the board to apply for this year's grant. The deadline is coming up the end of this month. It's very similar application to what we applied for in 2009 for a vehicle exhaust removal system for stations 18 and 19. It was denied through the grant process last time and I feel, even though we were denied last time, that we have a good opportunity for award in 2010. I estimate this project to be approximately $75,000. And the grant would, if awarded, would pay for 95% of it and leaving us with approximately 5%, which would be, I don't have my calculator on me, but it'd be in the range of $3,000 to $4,000.
Any questions for the chief with regard to the grant for an exhaust system for these stations in question?
Chief, the 5% grant is within the capability of your current budget?
I believe so.
Thank you.
At this time.
Any other questions? Need a motion to authorize the fire chief to proceed with the grant application then? Oh, I'm sorry. You got a question?
No.
Would you like to add anything?
I think Phil was saying maybe he wants to make the motion.
Okay. So I'll move. Is there a second? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
That's 5-0.
Thank you. The next item was, would be to get a, for Selectman approval to proceed with the request for proposals for the new voter repeater communication system. This is that phase one of two for the communications upgrade for the town. And I believe you folks get, got a copy of it. This, the ERP spells out some of the equipment demands, also the sites that might be preferred to get the communication systems up and running. We hope to have the bids in by July 1st.
Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, next one.
Chief, when I, we had emailed each other, can you, for the Motorola, where you specify equipment, can you put or equivalent next to it?
That was one of the things through the grant, again, we received the grant from, from the EMPG grant process. And when we actually applied for the grant, we specified the Motorola product because it was part of, it was compatible to the equipment, approved equipment list under the grant. It was important for me also to add on to the general rules and regulations of, general provisions of this, of this RFP that any bidder could bid some, an alternative, but they just had to spell out what the alternative was to meet our spec and to get it done. Most of the, most of what was worked upon when we looked at the consultant that came in and helped us with this, this project, along with vendors, they all were leaning towards the state's bid, bid list and the grant list of equipment for Motorola voter repeater systems. There may be other products out there. We just would have to see a vendor, see if a vendor came forward and say, and said, "This not only meets the, the grant equipment list requirements, but it'll get the job done." We'll evaluate that when the bids come in.
Are there multiple Motorola dealers?
There are in the state. I know of
That can bid on this?
Yes, I know of at least two. Two have shown interest anyway.
Are there any other questions? That I'd accept a motion? So move. We have a motion by Selectman Campasano, seconded by Selectman D'Vanzza. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Again, I will just like to let those in the viewing audience just to remind them that if you are interested, we do have an informational meeting tonight at 7:30 at Goffstown High School, Hebrew Auditorium to provide information regarding the Wallace and Mass Road intersection. Again, it's at 7:30 this evening. Okay. We're going to go to Selectmen's discussion and we'll start off with, I'm gonna do committee reports first. Budget Committee. The Budget Committee met last Tuesday. I was out of town last week. I know they met at the police station. They were given a tour of the police station. And other than that, I don't know what transpired. I'll read the minutes and I'll convey that to you, I guess. So I did hear that there was some discussion about the contract negotiations. And I will reiterate to the chair that the only entity that can negotiate on behalf of the community is the Board of Selectmen and their designated representatives and/or attorney. No other entity is allowed to do that. I know there was some, there are some folks in the Budget Committee that would like to have a seat at that table. Unfortunately, we cannot accommodate that, that request. And I'll convey that once again to the, to the Budget Committee Chair. Anything else? And I will, again, I'll, I'll brief you on the Budget Committee after I read, read the minutes. Parks and Rec Commission, that'll be you, Steve.
Okay. Parks and Rec Commission did meet. The main conversations was with regards to that they are going to have three subcommittees, one for maintenance operations, one for programs, and one for budget. And what they're doing is by organizing these, these subcommittees is that they wanted, though there is a, a plan for Parks and Rec, they want to still develop some goals and some objectives regarding the long-range plans. Also during that meeting, there was some conversation regarding rails, trails, and the money that was put aside from the, from the, from the impact fees. And I, I just want, I was just, I was just asked to request to bring that to note. Though I know that we did speak with Dave French, Mr. French at the time regarding the, that those fees to be used towards, for the rails to trails. The committee was not, did not know about that till, I guess, till they started going through these subcommittees and looking at budgets and money. So, but anyway, at that point in time, did explain that we did speak with Mr. French. In fact, we thought Mr. Draper was also here. I'm not sure if anyone can remember that or not.
I, for you mind, I'll turn it over to you because you were at the time with the rep and there was discussion at the Parks and Rec meetings.
I was present at a park commission committee meeting and they did vote on setting aside $9,000.
Now, this is for the, that is for the bridge.
The culvert.
This is with regard to the trestle
For the grant money.
For the grant money for rails to trails, the matching.
Excuse me. Okay, different project.
Different one. What I did was I did check our, our minutes. There was discussion at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting with regard to that. There was also, a week or two later, I believe it was November 29th or 30th, we had a Selectmen's meeting. Then Director Dave French came in, told us that it was the consensus of the board that it was okay to use those impact fees as the matching component for that grant, the transportation grant.
Provided that we did not
Provided that we did not deplete it and that there was monies for some planned improvements at Roy Park. And that was honored. And the other thing that I, that I should mention is that, you know, the board as a courtesy through Selectman Campasano did have those discussions, but the ultimate authority to expend impact fees resides with this board ultimately. And, you know, certainly there was no end run by any stretch. I think we did our, we communicated that, you know, very clearly. And we even acted based upon, you know, the director's feedback that it was, you know, appropriate and it was fine with the commission at the time. So if you can convey that to the Parks and Rec Commission, we would appreciate it.
The other part that was discussed was that spring programs are up and running. They've secured summer, summer seasonal employment. And the Goffstown Gallup has 24 people registered and I guess that's going off on April 21st.
April 21st?
I'm sorry. 24 registered is April 21st. I'm sorry.
Right.
Okay.
June it's in.
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah. And
They already issued the event permit.
I apologize. And they did discuss some of the parks regarding, the tennis court came up a little bit and regarding, as the tennis court gets flat, the dirt on the side of the field is erosion. So they're talking about some of the, some of the things to secure what we have in the parks or like in Barnes where you have the tennis courts. It's higher than the, than the lay of the land and that they would like to see a, a shoulder that comes off it. Because they're looking at some of the small things to
We have shoulder equipment.
Yeah, we do. Have a shoulder, a shouldering machine.
I understand. So we spoke about that. So they were talking about how they were gonna do it by hand. I said, "Well, I might want to get a hold of DPW. We have a new shouldering machine." But they spoke about the parks and some of the conditions that are in regarding the field at Barnes. And they also talked about Roy, Roy Park, which is, as Rick put it, is probably, you know, the worst park we have in town. So what they were looking, they're trying to look at what they can offer for the people. So anyway, that was
Okay. 250th Anniversary Committee is meeting this Thursday and we will recap the
No, you were supposed to meet last Thursday.
We were, but it got canceled and it's gonna happen this Thursday from what I'm told.
I didn't get that.
I'm sure Elizabeth will probably call you.
Okay.
And just to recap the, you know, the, the results of the Business Expo and start to plan for maybe one more activity this year, as well as just all of our events for, for next year. I also would like to make a plug for, while I'm on that topic, Main Street. I guess they're doing like some wacky canoe race. And knowing that Selectman D'Vanzza and Selectman Fornier are avid canoeists.
Kayaker.
That's fine. A kayak is equally as good. But the thought process was that both of the Selectmen would be in the canoe together during this like obstacle course.
Two doubles, two singles.
I've already volunteered you two guys. Hopefully that was okay. I figured that since you guys are active in kayaking and you own kayaks, that you'd be good at this. So it's gonna be Old Home Day and Bruce Norman is the contractor.
Not in town.
Then Selectman Pierce.
I have a disability, so.
I'd probably stand by, no, no problem.
I believe the chief has also gotten swindled into this one too?
No, I'll be coordinating my troops on the, in the rescue boats.
Okay. All right. CIP?
CIP meant Thursday. We had our organizational meeting, laid out the schedule. The ground rules swore each other in. I swore in the, the members of the committee and then Earl Carroll swore me in as a justice of the peace. We reviewed the two water district CIP entries. Did not have a formal presentation from the water districts, but we just reviewed their CIP entries. And then we had a formal presentation from Chief O'Brien regarding the Fire Department's CIP requests, which as you can imagine centered mostly around the, the vehicle needs.
I did bypass Library Trustees as that was mine and I was out of town and I will inform the board next week.
There is something in your packet. They supplied a summary.
Oh.
June 6?
June 6, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's also, there's free fishing in New Hampshire. Take, take a child fishing and undoing that. That's why I won't be in town.
June 5?
There was some flyers that, that romantically said the book sale was on June 6th that you might have seen, but it's the 5th.
The book sale.
So you are available.
Talking about the book sale.
So then you are available.
I don't know.
Listen, put the kid in the canoe with you and you'll be fine, all right? And I'll get, I'll get you the fishing rod. All right. It is now 6:30 and we will now have our public hearing. So I'd like to open the public hearing. And this is a public hearing to accept and expend up to $300,000 of STAG grant monies to assist with the water hookups in the Lynchville, Danus, and Dumont Parks areas. And just for those of you in, in the public, a STAG grant is, I guess, a congressional
Earmark.
Earmark, which was applied for through our congressional Earmark, which was applied for through our congressional delegation and appropriated. This will allow some offsetting, about, up to 55% of the hookup fee for residents in those, in that community to hook up to the new water system that was installed last year. And we would need to, again, our, this public hearing is to accept any testimony, but there are no, there's no one here from the public. Anyone from the board like to comment? All right. Since there is no one here to have anything, say anything public, I will now close the public hearing to accept and expend $300,000 STAG grant to assist with the water hookups in the Lynchville, Danus, and Dumont Park areas. We have a motion by Selectman DeVanzo to accept and expend that $300,000 STAG grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Campasano. All those in favor, you want to recuse yourselves? Selectman Fornier accuses himself because he is a resident in that area. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
That is four, zero. All right. Any new business? No going once, going twice, no new business? You have some new business?
No, I don't have new business. But if there's no new old business, you could probably do the non-public with the chief.
Yeah. Is there any old business?
Just that I attended, I went up to the LOB on Friday, and.
LLB, and you went on Friday?
LOB.
Oh.
And there wasn't, there wasn't enough time for me to speak, so.
Okay. LLB is the Legislative Office Building at Concord.
Well, thank you for going.
Right. Okay, so that being the case, we have done all of our business, with the exception of non-public session. So unless there is any other public business, I will then close the public part of our meeting. Again, I will, just to reiterate.
But resume at 7:00 for the public hearing?
Right, right. I just want to reiterate that at 7:30 at, at the high school, we're meeting, we're having an informational meeting to discuss the roundabout at Wallace and Mast Road. So our meeting will resume at 7:30 after.
Well, 7:00 for the public hearing.
7:00 for the public hearing, right. And then we'll, we'll. Okay, so if you want to go and start in, start up again at 7:00. Joe, if you're out there, and you want to get something to eat and come back to the TV at 7 o'clock, we'll be back on.
Motion to exit Thursday. I mean, excuse me, motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A3 to be hired.
We have a motion to go into non-public session, do have a second. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We need a roll call? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's official. And we'll meet next door for non-public. To welcome everyone back to the Board of Selectmen meeting. We had a brief non-public session in which some action was taken. I need a motion in public session with regard to the discussion in non-public.
So move.
It would be a motion to authorize the chief to hire.
With his recommendation.
With his recommendation. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous, chief. It is now 7 o'clock, and it is a scheduled public hearing to establish an ordinance for creating yield right-of-way signs on Cove and on Chetel, is it Street or Road? Chetel Road, I believe, at the, at Lynchville Park Road. Chetel Ave, I apologize, Chetel Ave. And since there is no. Yeah.
Yes.
Selectman Fornier, once again, is recusing himself. He is a resident in that neighborhood. Since there is no public here to provide any comment, is there anyone from the board who wishes to comment? And since you're not on the board, if you want to.
Member of the public now.
You're a member of the public. If you want to provide comments, you can, but I just ask that you just state that.
I'm good.
You're good. No, no one has any comment, okay. We will then close the public hearing. I know it's one minute later. And is there any motions with regard to this?
We have another one next, one more.
I'll say they have one more. That's right, we can't take action if they have two on these, right? Okay, I apologize. The two-step process on these. All right. This is probably one of the shorter ones. And I ran it, I can't believe it.
Neither can we.
Not feeling the love. We are going to adjourn, and we will.
Recession.
Recession, I mean recess, that's what I meant. Recession until 7:30, where we will meet at the Hebrew Auditorium for our public information meeting regarding the Wallace Mast Road roundabout. Thank you.
We anticipate more public there.
Yes, I'm sure there will be a few more.